Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Welcome to the United States of America. I want to provide some questions.
Just about a minute.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I understand.
I didn't send that email out. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, just let it over to you.
Evening, morning.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. For those of you who've just come in during a public hearing, we just ask out the name, your name, your city, all comments are directed off through the table, and we give you two to three minutes each for speaking. If we can start tonight's meeting as a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a sovereign republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I may start with introductions. Steven Guaranti, Laura Brizzi, Jeff Grebes, Phil Daniels, Pete, Harvey Teal, Don Heckelman, Lawrence Howard, Vicki Spring, and Stephanie Twobin, our secretary. First item on the agenda is the minutes of an April 4 meeting. Anyone who had a chance to review them? Would anyone care to make a motion to accept the minutes from an April 4 meeting?
My motion.
Thank you, Steven.
I'll second it. Sorry, I don't care.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Seven zip zip. Okay, first item of public hearing is Marty and Pamela Hoyt, under subdivision. Referring to this putting off a piece of property to separate their home, cell tower, up north and high that out. Excuse me, gracious, now. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, at a public hearing will be held at St. Louis County, the town Hall until at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at the Postonkill Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postonkill, New York, 12140, to review a minor subdivision application submitted by Marty and Pamela Hoyt on property located at 116 High Meadow Road, April Park, New York. Copies of the application supporting documents are available at the Postonkill Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Steph. If any... There is a completed map here, if anyone cares to review it. Final map that was submitted by Marty regarding the subdivision for the cell tower. Okay? Anyone in the public care to speak?
Could I ask or make a motion to open it?
Of unaffirmative.
That's all right.
Excuse me for that. May I have a motion to open the public hearing section for Marty and Pamela Hoyt, under subdivision, up north and high that out?
Motion.
Thank you, Steven.
Second.
Thank you, Mary, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much. Any members of the board, actually last first, any members of the board, three to seven, referencing this, under subdivision? For the cell tower. Anyone from the public care to speak in reference to this particular subdivision? Thank you. Okay. That was very quick. Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Who's first?
Please, thank you. All those in favor opposing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Here we seven zip zip. You can take your hand. So formally taking action that this Tulat Minor Subdivision by Marty and Pamela Hoyt has been approved of a hearing, has been held, and would you care to vote?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
To make, I'm sorry. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve, formally approve, this minor subdivision for Marty and Pamela Hoyt? Laura, thank you. Don, you second.
I did permit the motion.
Don Heckelman.
Don, you second.
Yes. All those in favor of formally approving the minor subdivision?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much, Marty. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, second map on display is a formal map submitted by April Dennis for her Tulat Minor Subdivision on the corner of Weatherwax and Snyder's Corners Road. Up here for display, if anyone cared to take a look at it, or if any of the board members cared to take a look at the final map, more than welcome to.
Two guys hoping to read it.
Sure, listen, please, Matt, check this in the last person.
Sue Higginson.
Yes, that is the correct location after we, the map that we had printed the last time, we went measured, that is the exact location of the stakes that when we view, Tom, and Jeff have surveyed.
Thank you very much. Any other board members care to review it? Laura, do you want to see?
Yeah, I'm good.
Would you please, thank you very much, Steph.
Yes, this is here again, at a public hearing will be held at St. Louis County, the town Hall until at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at the Postonkill Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postonkill, New York, 12140, to review a minor subdivision application submitted by April Dennis on property located on Waterwax Road, Postonkill, New York. Copies of the application supporting documents are available at the Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Steph. Do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion.
Steven? I've got one, thank you very much. All those in favor of opening it up?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Any board members care to comment? I would like to thank April for taking the time, having the patience with each going back and forth, taking the time to show them on the property, deeply appreciated, listening to what we have to say, and revising the point lightly. Thank you very much. Any members of the public care to speak? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So will.
Okay, and I'll second. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing regarding April Dennis's Tulat Minor Subdivision on Weatherwax and Snyder's Corners Road? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Do I have, do I have a motion to formally approve the minor subdivision for April Dennis on Snyder's Corners Road and Weatherwax Road? Thank you very much, Pete, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Seven zip zip. Thank you very much, April. Any leave? Okay. Last item on tonight's agenda for public hearings is the Volan proposal down on McKinley Way. I believe Mr. Peasby has put a new map up on the easel board over there. Same map, it's left here, right? Okay, up for display, if any members of the public care to take a minute to review them, or if any board members care to look at it. See, any changes?
No. Not since the last meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peasby. I would just wait for somebody to come up. Okay, may I have a motion to open public hearing?
I can read it.
I'm subject to change.
Notice here, is your right hearing, a public hearing will be held at St. Louis County, the town Postonkill, at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at the Postonkill Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postonkill, New York, 12140, to review a minor subdivision application submitted by Ken Volan on property located on McKinley Way, lines in New York. Copies of the application supporting documents are available at the Postonkill Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Steph. Okay, do I have a motion to open a public hearing? Steven? I'll second. Any members of the board care to comment? I'm sorry, excuse me. May I have a vote to approve opening of the public hearing? Or? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Seven zip zip. Any members of the board care to comment?
Just as a point of clarification, unit number four had, they had a significant change last meeting, and I don't know if they want, they were already in a public hearing, I don't know, maybe you want to clarify that that was a real sticking point for a lot of the board members, I know some changes had been made, so.
As of, okay, at the last meeting, back and forth, Mr. Peasby, Mr. Volan, with a proposal to move unit number four, to change the lay of unit number four, and to move it back from the roadway, so that it's approximately 19 to 20 feet at each corner clearance, and roads are to be questioned, and lose a small change in the roadway itself in order to accommodate that, and the code sack is still there. Those were questions the board had, and that, um...
The direction of the road changed, however, the design of the road isn't much, it's just how it's going to lay on the ground.
So that is, those are the main sticking points that we have had, and, um, Mr. Volan and Mr. Peasby did the length and opposed the original, about four feet, five feet plus the shoulder width, which was unacceptable, so we asked for further clearance, and they redesigned the layout of, of unit number four such to accommodate the wishes of the board. Other, other questions or comments from the board? Public?
Tom, I'm curious if during construction, that happens to be that that building was constructed with a empty road? What are the repercussions? This is probably a question for...
Yeah, they'd be in violation and they'd have to move it, or come some others out of the agreement.
That, that was like one of the major sticking points, and I just want to make sure that that is clearly in order.
They have to build it in accordance with a flat that you're approving, and if it's not, then it has to be current. We have enforcement of that.
Yeah, I would, I would have to come back and present a change order of something to the board and then get that approved.
Which I don't, I don't see that.
Or move it though.
Yeah, it's not happening.
Make sure that one's 20. Make sure that one's 20.
But we already, we already have the building state out, and I will be providing layout services during, during construction.
Can you ensure that that is not? Thank you.
As well, my concern with building four is that 25 foot setback on the, on the rear side of the building, making sure we meet that as well. We will, we will make sure.
Meet all setbacks, right?
Right, we will make sure that it is laid out as it is on the flat.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your understanding and your voice. Other questions?
The town still hasn't access to get to that, right?
That, that, that was a permanent easement that we have access to, the bonds in the back, that was before Mr. Volan purchased the property from Mr. Patrone, he had agreed to supply us access to that, a permanent easement that was in the state.
Yeah, that's part of that subdivision, the dedication hasn't happened yet, but it will happen, and it's in the process of happening.
Yeah, that was, they spent a little bit of holdup for the, the...
Well, because of the easement change to, from the, behind where these buildings are to, to the road, which all, it, it actually changed because the original area provided for the easement was not suitable to get to the bond, so it wasn't just what it is, it's sets for both purposes.
Other questions, please? Okay. May we open this up to the public for comments? And if you have comments, please look to the easel, I'm sorry, to the stand, and if one of the easels is there too, if you care to take a look at that, or if you say it's one way or one, which must identify yourselves, and please, maintain civil...
So I'm just, I'm just going to move here so I can address you.
May you hear you clearly. Brian Warren, 7 Lockview Drive, on behalf of everyone on Lockview Drive, just want to say thank you for, everyone for allowing us to come up and just express our questions.
Okay, that is most important, we're most appreciative of people coming in and participating at the meetings, that's why we have it, and it's most important that we get feedback and comments from the public, and that's, we do value you taking the time and to participate in terms of, very much so.
We can see that, being new residents here, it's a, it's a very town-like environment for us, so it's, uh, we welcome that too, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a couple of questions. Um, first off, as far as being notified, we were all just kind of notified, we got a red slip in the mail on, I guess it apparently was supposed to be delivered on Sunday, we were both home, said that they attempted to deliver it, nobody came to our door, just wanted to find out what the protocol is, why we're just being notified now, we've all been living here, we've never received any notification. I don't really know what the process is, I'm not sure all of us do, what is the protocol for us to be notified for what is happening on the boards of our property?
Okay, we've got this, we're notified by registered mail, and we're trying to get it out 10 days prior to the meeting, and we have a return receipt.
It's been out on the 18th.
So that was the first one that we received, should we have received more prior to that?
After that, it's really your post office, it has nothing to do with us, correct?
No, but the, uh, you're talking about the months, the months prior.
Correct.
The, other than keeping track of what's happening.
In the town.
Uh, the town, all of the meetings are, the minutes and the agendas are all posted on the town website, and so other than keeping an eye on what's happening in the town, there's no formal notification to the neighbors until this public hearing.
So we wouldn't have been notified?
Other than keeping track of what's on the, town website.
Even this far into the process, like, because it's, again, just, just trying to get clarified, because we're just trying to figure out why we just got notified and you're already into construction process?
Well, that is good instruction for us, this is the public hearing prior to, prior approval, which is prior to construction, there's no construction, the only, this got, it's a little, might sound like it's a little late in the process because there was a prior, your subdivision involved the creation of that easement that we were just discussing, not your, like the one you actually live in.
Sure, yeah, correct.
Uh, related to the stormwater management and heat easement, so that has been in process for a very long time, there was a public hearing for that.
Yours is?
That was before my time, so at least 18 months ago, or 14, 16 months ago. So that's, other than that, as public notices when you, public hearing is when you get direct notice over, for, for all of the public, for all the public, no matter what project.
So should we have gotten it way earlier, or now we shouldn't? Now is the time that we should have been notified during this, during this period? Oh, you're perfect, awesome. Uh, the other question was actually just for your last comment, so we are bordering unit number four, your comment was that, um, you will figure out that you're going to be within the dimension during the construction process, so I would think that should be figured out prior to construction, if you're in the middle of construction and you don't need that fourth foot requirement, what happens then?
So, these, these four units that are shown on the flat here, those are building envelopes, so that's our area that we can build in, and that, that area that I've shown on that map is meeting all the town requirements as far as zoning is concerned, and what I will do before any shovel hits the dirt, and I've already put some stakes out there, I'm not sure if you walked down.
I have, yep.
That, those couple of stakes you're building for, that are right behind your house, that's the envelope that we're speaking of, and prior to any shovel going in the dirt, I'm going to go out there and put more, update the stakes, make sure they're right where they need to be, and then, then they'll be able to start construction.
That's it, perfect. Just sounds like during construction, we try to figure it out, so, but that's going to happen prior.
Yeah, those stakes we need in the ground, and obviously when they're digging a hole in that building envelope, there's going to be dirt that moves upwards, but as far as permit structure, it will stay within that building envelope.
All right, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you very much, I took the time to ask.
How are you? My name's Matt Lutz, I'm 9 Lockview. I'm not listening again? Matt, Matt, I'm a little bit of a tree hunter, all right, in my concern, I have marshland behind me, um, I don't know where we are on this map, uh, to, right, is this marshland I'm here, oh, so I'm actually right around here, oh, I think I'm there, so probably around that, that region. Um, my concern is, have we done any environmental assessments, DEC, to see if there's, you know, the expansion of the marshland or wetlands, can we call the Army Corps of Engineers to look at wildlife, any endangered species, I know we have some herons, can we, wild eagles, I know their, their population is growing, but I just wondered, can we have some type of survey or assessment done to make sure that land is, is going to be okay?
Can I speak to that?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Peasby, yesterday night, I have a question for you.
Um, so I, we have had the wetlands delineated, um, and there is, they are DEC wetlands and not Army Corps wetlands?
No, the Army Corps looks at the wildlife, but...
Okay.
DEC looks at it.
So with Army Corps wetlands, Army Corps wildlife areas, there's no setback?
Okay.
With DEC wetlands and wildlife areas, there's 100 foot setback.
So I'm now trying to speak.
Oh, no, that's only a question, I'm asking, can we have another environmental assessment done by the DEC, because I, when was the last time it's been done, that's what I'm asking, and the only reason I ask is, the, at the time of HorrorCon, my neighbor just wanted to put a new docket, and they were going to use our environment, like our, our potential plan and everything done, and they said it had to be within five years, um, and they were like, no, and we were like, really? We were just trying to help out our neighbor, uh, so I'm just curious, when, when was the last assessment for environment for this to be done?
As a requirement of a minor subdivision in town Postonkill, we have to do a short form environmental assessment, which I submitted to the town and it read at the last meeting, so I guess that would be your answer, you did the short form, which is the requirement for state and town.
And what was the result?
There was no impact.
Oh, there was no expansion?
No negative impact, first of all.
Okay, no words, my, yeah, oh, did, all right, did you?
I'm sorry, I mean, should you, please continue.
Yeah, just one other question. Our concern is one of the permits, uh, I know you're, I know you're trying to do, you do, you're just going to do the permits and all that, my concern is construction vehicles, um, last, it was last October, November, the street was paved, and the paving company left their trailer and their rig and everything blocking, so it'd be McKinley and Lockview, and it ended up blocking it for three days. I'm worried about construction vehicles, where are they going to park, are they going to be able to go down that narrow road, uh, and we can't have a park at that end because it'd end up being a bottleneck. My also concern would be also the construction vehicles coming in, I know, um, we're going to talk about the bus stops, but my worry is just where are those construction vehicles going to be, where the trailers, the big rigs, where are they all going to be?
Do I need to speak to that?
Please, I was going to ask you to address that first.
So as part of this, we're actually going, that narrow road that goes down into this area?
Yeah.
We're going to be expanding that, so it's going to meet the same requirements as your road that you have going up into your subdivision.
Okay.
So that road is going to be wide, and any part of construction vehicles that are going to be used for this project will remain on our property.
All right, so you were going to do the road first, when are you planning on doing the road?
That would be up to my client. I am not privy to his plan as far as as soon as he's going to start working on it. But that would be, that would be as part of the construction. We're gonna widen that road.
The entire road, so I don't.
Can you, okay, can you just show me?
Oh, is this where we are? Where, okay, this is, so no, not this part of the road, but you're gonna have this road completed first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right here, right here is your intersection that comes up to here.
Yep, yep.
And this is the narrow road that comes off the end.
Yes, yes. There's not much room.
So from where that, there's.
I'm sorry, excuse me, just hold on. Can everyone in the public see what he's pointing through?
It's a narrow road. Oh, okay, oh, so this is something new. Sorry, I just. Sorry. May I ask, just had a quick question. What does the road have to be widened to? What is it currently and what does it have to be widened to? Only it takes one car. Does it have to be two cars?
That's not a car, in a car.
Okay, but here is my, no, my concern is up here. I know you have a lot of land here. This you can do a lot of. This is my concern right here. Is that gonna be able to get to the 20, 28 on their side? There's only like three in the other pond.
No, so we're gonna, we own up the hill before the property line. We own up the hill. We would etch into that hill and widen that road coming down in front of this, this building.
So the, this is where I'm concerned, right here. You're gonna widen all, you're gonna get into the hill? And then the road's just gonna carry through this apartment complex? Or are you gonna reroute it?
It will carry down through in front of this building, just as it does now.
Yep.
And then that's, that building right there is right here. And that's where this plan began.
Okay. That's, I guess that's possible. I don't know, you're definitely, so that's gonna be built before this construction is being, because I don't want it to be done after.
Construction of the road will be.
Would be parched.
Yes.
It has to be, okay. That's it. I think that's all I really have, you know, the permit, I think everything is gonna be in order. You guys will, that's, that's check that right in, in Tracy Church, church building. But I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna come up with that, that's gonna be important for us to come up together. I have some follow-up questions that I just wanna clarify about the. Sorry, Jenna and Christopher Caruso, One Lockview Drive.
Steph, Chris?
Yeah, Chris, yeah.
Steph, did you get that? Thank you, Steph.
So my main question for about the access road as well, um, which I guess can be pointed out to us again, just so I fully understand. But I had a couple of questions. I mean, the road, obviously now, we're on One Lockview Drive, so we are like the corner lot. The swamp that's like next to the road is technically ours. Um, so just wanna know how the, this is first question, how is the road expanding? Where is it gonna go? Is that access road just shy of the water on the left-hand side as you're going in the easement towards the new subdivision? Is it going to, is the road gonna be expanded into like the pond? Or are, is it going into my property?
In our state, we would never be allowed to just cover over a pond.
Correct. So then in my brain, the only place that it can go is into my property. Where else is it, is it expanding? Because my property buffs up against that easement. So how is that road being expanded?
So your property line is, is your, this is your parcel right here.
Yeah.
Your property line comes in on a curve like this.
Yeah.
So we own this 50-foot wide piece here where the, where the road currently is. And we're going to expand it only within the limits of that 50-foot wide segment.
So, all right, so and then as far as emergency vehicles, like fire trucks, if something had to get through, if there was an issue or a fire, say a, you know, one of the duplexes, like, I assume. What you're saying is everything's big enough to make that happen, is that right?
Yeah, so the road, the construction of this road will be built to the standard by New York State. And we've already had discussions with.
Yeah.
People from the fire department to make sure that there's access. We added two extra fire hydrants in our plan because it was concerned with water supply. So there's three fire hydrants, and really, there were only technically by the standard have to be one. Um, but we're gonna add two more.
Yep.
Um, and it will, will be widened up. And that's the other reason why it's like, well, it's that down here, so it'll be able to turn around.
Okay, and then what about in the 50-foot buffer? Like, is that basically sort of, what would you guys be doing in that 50-foot buffer? Is that like running, is that like running utilities or like what? I mean, obviously that's in between the road you're expanding and our direct property line. I guess if you guys could just speak to what happens in that buffer zone, anything?
Current, your current plan would be in, would be you expand the roadway and where it lies. So the, the only part really where we'll be doing construction in that 50-foot buffer is right, is right in here.
Okay.
And then we will be running our water line off of the hydrant that's here at the end of Lockview. We'll run down the side of this 50-foot buffer behind this building and into the backs of these buildings.
Okay.
And this is Dave and Lou Basil, they're on the fire department. They come every meeting. And so part of our, our ask always is, you know, can you guys get your trucks down there?
Oh, great, that's good.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people don't think, they just put a road in and then.
Yeah.
You know, these guys are stuck trying to get their vehicles down to those areas, so.
I have a question for that, sorry. The, um, the one of my concerns is that that road is a private road, correct? So it wouldn't be maintained by the town. What if the road is not maintained and there's not able to be sufficient access, like in the winter? What if it's not plowed?
Well, I mean, the road.
Mr. Valan, you can answer that, please?
Yeah, well, we have to plow because the tenants gotta get to work, so. You know, I got, actually, we get a lot of snow. My first year up here, 2016 or 17, pardon me, we had 37 inches of snow. My guy just, he, he blew me off plowed 24/7.
Um, the other, I guess the last question that I have in regard to the access road is, um, the water pond runoff, the retention ponds that are next to that access road? How are those gonna be modified? Like, there's the storm, um, pond parcel, I guess. Is there gonna be lighting down there? Is there gonna be fencing? It seems like a little bit of a safety concern.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, can you just be a little more specific exactly? Well, okay, we're talking the ponds. Are you talking the ponds that are nearby the stop sign or environmental property? Are you talking about the ponds deep in the back?
In the back.
Okay.
There was a pond in the plans, you know?
Yeah, the, okay, we have access. We have an eas, the town has an easement to like back stormwater pond. And at the point, we have it announced, we formalized again, it's like change, but we have to maintain that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gotta maintain because that's an access point for the town, for the fire department.
Okay. Um, just one more question, then. Yeah, then.
Please don't stop.
Sure, okay. Yeah, sorry, we're just, just trying to understand, obviously, you know, we're just kinda here. I guess, you know, four duplexes proposed now, is there any plans now or in the future to expand? There's obviously a lot more land there, is there more?
Yeah.
No, no, please.
Uh, nothing at the moment. I may, you know, we may wanna put, like I said to you when I met, I may wanna put a road on the other side and put residential residential structure in the back, but nothing at the end.
Yeah.
And that, that would come off of the other entrance, right?
Yeah, nowhere near where you guys.
That would come off of this entrance. Uh, nothing can really, after these are done, there's nothing that really can be done because the.
Yeah. Okay. And then I guess again, you know, you mentioned, I think you said the water lines going through there. We don't have a lot of trees there. There's like probably three or four. If we can do anything, just to make sure we try and maybe keep those, uh, you know, there, that would be preferred.
Also, like, when I spoke to you on Friday, Chris, you know, we wanna be good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Like I said, if we have to put up some, I can't pronounce the name, Abbotusis or whatever, like the little. You know, to block it, if that's what you want. I, I'm cool with that. I, I wanna be good neighbors, so.
All right.
That was another, that was another sort of personal concern that we had as well, obviously, because they're so close directly behind our houses, you know? You know, like where our property ends, I don't wanna infringe on anybody else's property. I don't, you know, necessarily want folks that we don't know yet to be infringing on ours. We have two small children. We'd like them to have sort of free grain in our backyard and don't wanna have to worry about that. And we're lucky enough, we have great neighbors, that we can do that. So that's one of our biggest concerns as well, is that, you know, we are able to maintain the privacy as much as possible for, you know, on our land.
Mr. Valan, you understand what the.
Absolutely, yeah. I spoke to Mr. Caruso on Friday about this, so, you know, I tried to.
Ease his fears, I think. Addresses fear.
And we could always request that we, that they mandate, we mandate some type of fencing or natural brush.
I thought, I thought some trees or something would be more, you know, more nature-like and, you know.
Right, again.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for my luck, everybody.
Yeah, we would appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm cool with that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
Uh, not separate questions. Just to add on to both you guys. Brian Warren, Seven Lockview Drive. In relation to the maintaining of that private road that it's a small access road here? You say, of course, you know, your tenants have to get out. Again, we're taking your word for it. So is that acceptable to you, the board? We're taking his word for it that he's gonna make sure that it's maintained at one small section if it's not maintained. So again, we're Seven Lockview, we're at the corner of the, I guess, uh, building number four. We have pine trees right there. God forbid there's a fire. Fire trucks cannot get in there, but those pine trees are like gasoline. It's gonna go right up and, and the wind blows constantly in that direction. So fire is a huge concern.
It, it's been, it's been maintained for the last six years without a complaint. I've owned it for six years, you know? We've, I actually, and my guy, we plowed the easement too. And I am head-ned, head-ned, this even moved yet. We plowed back there, going to the stormwater pond.
We don't, we don't, we don't, sorry. We don't know that it's maintained because we're not allowed on it because it's private property. I was told to, I was walking my dog there one time and was told to stay off the property. And I was just walking my dog.
I got you. And let your neighbor just. Insurance reasons and stuff.
And I completely understand that. I'm a good neighbor too. I just moved here from Connecticut. Very exciting part of the small town and part of this, this group. So when I was told that.
It could have been, it could have been me. I don't, I'm not even sure, but the reason being that right event is because we don't allow dogs. Like, I don't wanna have a lot of dogs.
I was very polite.
Not, not, not for you, but for the tenants. The gentlemen that owned it before me. I love dogs. I have two men pins, I'm an animal lover. But the guy that owned it before me, they didn't allow any dogs. So I didn't want so many, maybe, you know, maybe I had a bad day, I don't know. I, I apologize also.
I respect, I'm sorry, I do respect that, but that's what I'm not.
I love dogs.
I just wanna make sure everybody stands and sits.
It's your property, you do with it what you want. And that's why I'm saying, I.
I had neighbors on Holloway who had the audacity for years to walk their friggin' dogs on my property.
Okay.
And it was my land, so I've had a hard time.
And I, I do respect that too, and that's why I brought that up. And that's why I said I do respect that. I really do, it's just.
I, I have a question. Would you be willing to put into this that you would maintain the road plow, plowing way wise?
That goes without.
At the same, at the same level that the town does within 24 hours.
And, and we do already.
You do, I, I know.
We do already.
I know you do, and I, if you have, if you have eight new tenants screaming at you, I know you're gonna plow the road.
We would make, and, and excuse me. We have a plow truck, but I got a, I got a new Kubota MX 6, uh, 6, 6,000 coming, so I'm gonna have a tractor too. So I got two means of plowing.
It would just, I think.
I don't mind adding that, no, we're gonna.
It'll be.
People gotta get to work.
I know you have to do it, so it's.
And please.
And you know the weather we get up here, you know? It, it'll be down by Emma Willard, it'll be sleet and it's shining up here. You know, it's that little difference in elevation, it's, uh.
Please know that we definitely respect private property. And it was just. Wasn't fair for.
But it will be, that will be a condition to get to putting proper clearance on that road by all times. We will not access the fire department and we will not access for people who have been there.
Tom, are we just, are we wording it the same way we did with the flat though, within 24 hours of the snow?
Yes, sir.
It's more so because fire trucks to get in there and, you know, emergency services, that's the big thing is the emergency services. That's, I don't really care about walking down that. If I have a little pond there, I'm not concerned with that, that was just kind of a personal thing.
If you wanna take it down there, you're welcome to, you know? I didn't wanna put a bad piece in your mouth. I said, I said, there's people in there that, that, that. I've got everything. I got a dog, like Mr. Smith. Yeah, and I had to refuse a tenant tonight to put up a great tenant. Because he had. I love animals, so. If I let one, if I let one here, like, I'll have three.
And that's why I respect it. I, I don't mind not walking there just because that, or you do, your tenants, so. Um, one more thing, can I have one more? Thank you, sorry. Um, so part of the easement here, once you get past the corner and then the first apartment complex, right at this corner? Is this owned by the town? Is that maintained by the town? So, so my property abuts back to that where the, um, those ponds are back, when that? Am I able to walk on that? Is that his property or is that owned by the town?
So just to be clear, this is this picture? That road you pointed to is this road, okay?
Okay, correct.
That's low up of that road.
Perfect, thank you. So from here on the plan, it shows that this is actually maintained by the town and.
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Ask the, call the sack, so right here's the storm pond, correct?
That's the storm parcel you're watching.
So that is not owned by the owner. That's maintained or owned by, so my property comes right to here. Am I able to walk on that? Like, is it somebody's private property or? Because we walk our dog down there and then, I wanna make sure I'm not.
I think Mr. Bear may own it, Mr. Russell, or I think Mr. Patrone and Mr. Bear still own that land from my knowledge. Maybe I'm wrong.
It will be dedicated to the town.
When does that happen?
It's a different part, within the next couple of months.
So then when the town owns it, what does that mean for us?
I don't know. It's a public, actually, do you know?
The town, it's the easement that the town is obtaining. We have, we have an easement now to get to that back pond. And this is, this will be more formalized than you, you're ready to touch.
But the easement isn't for public use. The easement is just for.
It's just the access back to the pond, it's not.
But that back parcel will be owned by the town, but that doesn't mean, just because it's owned by the town, it's open to the public, that's a separate question that I don't know the answer to. Town property is sometimes open to the public, it's sometimes not. So you have to, we have to, I don't know the answer.
So it abuts our town property, I'd have to come to the board basically and say, hey, would it be okay if we're walking down our path? I'm just walking my dog down here, walking that dog.
We're happy to address that in future.
Perfect, thank you. That was just a question.
Um, we don't, we don't, we don't address that at all. There is an answer, I don't know.
It'd be the town, town board.
Whether or not it's open.
And it was just an open question. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Please, sir, thank you.
Chris Gilbert, my wife Stephanie from Seventeen Lockview Drive.
Chris Gilbert, my wife Stephanie from Seventeen Lockview Drive. Our major concern that we were bringing up was the traffic on the entryway of actually McKinley itself, with the, you know, the other, um, few buses going in, the increase in traffic. Uh, we currently have five children in our development right now that are on the bus, and I don't know how many are in departments. But, um, every morning, every afternoon, there's a line down McKinley, off the road, on the road, kids running everywhere. Uh, within the next two to four years, we're gonna have sixteen kids that are developing off the buses. Um, I don't know if it's a school issue that we should bring into, but they told us that the bus will not come in here. So we have kids on, we have over twenty kids on Spring Avenue every day. It's very tough to see to the right coming out of McKinley.
You need to go to the school board.
I'm sure, but.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, what?
But, um, it's just the increased traffic of having our, our kids down there, there's no, you know, no spot to go. Where do we go? We have to be right down at the end, and we have sixteen, seventeen cars, twenty kids out there. Every day, twice a day.
Walk your kids to the, to the bus stop, etc., right? You guys are all.
I mean, I'm almost, I'm almost a good half mile away.
Yeah, that, it's too far.
And it's a four-year-old. I'm not gonna be walking in the snow out there. I mean, right now.
People show up, they're usually.
They plow, they plow down and back, there's banks on both sides, we can't park our cars there, I mean, routinely, we've been late because we can't get out. You know? And even this is even gonna increase that, so.
You could, you could go to this, to the transportation department and ask that they come up to the phone.
We have, we have, we're trying.
About a year now.
Keep trying.
So we can't safely get our kids on and off the bus.
But, and there's only five kids on the bus right now, right?
No, but we told them, within the next year, there will be sixteen.
Until the enrollment is there, they won't do it.
I mean, any storm, we can't, we can't leave. If there's a truck parked there with a trailer, we absolutely.
No, there won't be a truck parked there with a trailer.
So you guys are gonna have to wait for your trucking vehicles.
Trucking vehicles will not be anywhere near.
Yeah, and they currently, the way McKinley helps, when the town plows, they plow in that private driveway, and then when they plow, they plow off it, and so it's, it's kind of constant battle. Just wanna make it known, so I appreciate that, but it's, it's very difficult and only gonna get ten times worse to get our kids safely on and off the bus, so. I think, you know, we're just hoping that somebody can be done with that little strip of McKinley.
I think, I would dedicate that if it helped them, maybe.
Something to get.
I'm not doing anything, but I would cut it just as a courtesy. To be honest, I just didn't like it looking long, you know, I get a little bit of OCD, so. I, I would dedicate it to this car, you know, the bus stop there.
We have special needs kids, I don't know. We have special needs. We have a special needs, um, child on the corner as well, they have a separate bus, that bus is coming in and out, and they have, at least one time that I am aware of, couldn't get their special needs, um, child on the bus.
Is it just the road?
We were backed off down McKinley.
Is it just the road that's the problem?
I'm not sure.
They, they.
But it's definitely.
Correct me if I'm wrong, they just, they go right on Spring Ave is where they park, right, the bus. They don't, they won't, the bus won't pull in, right, they'll just park. Because they do the same thing on the other side.
So they're still back on one side, and they're calling the other way to get on the bus, and the special needs bus cannot get in. So, like, we're, and there's only gonna be more and more cars, so more kids coming. And I think why, I don't know.
Providing a school bus, as the school administration should.
It absolutely can't.
But if, but if they won't.
Well, can I ask you two more minutes until we get the school board on board? I, I do not feel safe, my child, I have two little ones. I don't feel safe.
If we can't get them down there, we can't see.
I know everybody's hurrying to do whatever, but I'm sorry, but I ask the board to please, please halt this construction project until we get the school board to move that bus stop.
We're required to get our kids on the bus.
I'm just asking, the safety.
We can't sit there, so. I mean, I don't want to take another time, I made my point, so. Thank you guys for your time and, uh, good luck.
Tom, where, isn't, aren't they already widening that portion of the road, or is it the other end of the road?
The other end.
It's separate from our project, so it is a concern.
It's a road initially leading into Lockview, as they're talking about, that the, that the car is parked along in order to get the children off the bus. Because the bus just pulls in, basically just pulls in off of Spring, which stays half on Spring and half onto the entrance into Lockview in order to pick up and discharge children.
Yeah, but they've done that before, and then the special needs bus can't get in, and we can't get out. So, and what happens if something happens, if you can't get emergency services?
But even if the development happens or not, this is your, this has been a problem. This does not have anything to do really with the development.
We're just talking about adding additional, potentially additional children, I mean.
No, why worries?
So the concern is that the problem is right now whether we put the development in or not, right? Right? I mean, the problem is, the buses are not willing to come in. But whether he was here or not, you'd still have that problem. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so my name is John Yen, I live in Five Lockview Drive. So I compare my neighbors', um, concerns and, you know, what they've brought up. I, I actually live, I will be living, I live directly in front of where you guys are going to be building. Right? And so I, I have, I have concerns with just where my septic tank is, where my property line is, where this septic tank is gonna be going, where this stormwater is going. Um, and just the fact that, you know, my property runs right into it as well, so it's on a hill, so.
Which one is yours on the map then?
Five Lockview.
So it's a second one.
This one right here.
No, so, I was saying, I was saying Lockview, so.
No, sorry, I'll be. I'm right, I'm right here, yeah. Fifteen, yeah. I'm lot fifteen, five Lockview, so I'm, I'm directly in front of it.
Does it, I hope the land went down towards you guys, right?
My septic tank, their septic tank is right there too.
No, the septic tank is on the other side.
Can you be gracious, just to explain where the septic's. Explain them, please.
All right, so on these. So this is your lot here.
Yeah.
This is where, this is, this is where the hill comes down from your house, your house is sitting somewhere in the street.
Yes.
Our first, the closest septic tank to your property line is almost a hundred feet away between you, place, and your porch. And then the septic system is on the complete other side of the road.
Right.
Yeah, so I see it as right here.
Run off is a hundred percent.
Right. There will, there will be a, uh, septic and erosion control plan as part of this, is there any minds? Something in any area?
Okay, John, okay, but are you getting your question answered by Mr. Fusco?
Yeah, I still, I still just have concerns just with my runoff going into there. And just the construction that's taking place here, do they, is there enough space between my property and, uh, and I obviously, I know that this is their property, but in terms of just where, just the wetlands, the my runoff and my septic tank and.
Town zoning is a twenty-five foot side setback, so I can twenty-five feet into my property before I can start building it. And we leave that way by destiny. As far as buildings are concerned. So these numbers are twenty-five feet off of your property.
That's, that's going to a road.
There is no road, there is no road.
There's a road that.
It was a road here.
Actually, that's the road.
This is, this has been, we were discussing earlier that we had to change the easement because there's no possible way we're gonna build a road here for the town to access the stormwater parcel. So we're gonna change that easement for this, for this road.
This road will go away then?
It, it, yes. There is no road, there's just.
It won't go away. It's never really existed.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's like the soil, it's a soil. It's like in the soil.
They call, they call the paper a paper.
It's a paper here.
It's just, it's just like a dotted line that if there was to be a road, that's where it would look, but we, part of, well, our discussions with the developers that we want a certain change is made, so that goes away.
It's gonna abandon in place.
Of course, of course, around garages.
Yeah, I, I guess it's just, okay.
Next question, please.
No other questions other than, you know, I agree with what my neighbors have said and took the concerns. I have two young kids there as well, been there five years. Um, and, you know, it, it just, it's just really not something that I'm, you know, very much in favor of. I just want to go on record and say that.
Thank you very much, Sean.
My name's Dana, I'm Seven Lockview. I guess, overall, when do you think this is gonna start? I count, you're in this process six weeks, this is seven, when is?
We're not, we're not trying to build tomorrow. We wanna bring infrastructure in, fix, fix the road, we wanna bring water in, we're working on bringing, uh, natural gas in. Uh, I want to do all the infrastructure this year and get it set up, see where mortgage rates go, see where loaner prices go, and possibly can probably go next year.
I read in some of the man's, there was something discussed about an overflow parking lot. Is that something that's still happening?
The discussion was as if there was adequate parking for each unit. And New York State, each movable unit needs to have two parking spots. Each unit's gonna have a garage, and each unit is gonna have a driveway in front of it, which means adequate parking.
I think earlier somebody brought up something about lighting, is there anything happening like that? Is there any, any lighting, like street lighting, or? I know in front of all of our houses, we have like this, it's like a solar light thing which somehow lights up the street, is there any lighting that I might be concerned with seeing that from my view?
We're not, this is the preliminary to get the approvals, we're not into designing things yet, but, you know, um, we, um.
Can I, just to get more specific on your question, are you talking about streetlights?
I, I don't really know.
We're not playing streetlights.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any streetlights, you would have just, they would be similar to like a common light that's in front of the house. A post light or something, that someone uses to light their driveway or their lawn. There's no intention of putting, of streetlights, either gonna light up your backyards.
Right.
You're not gonna be able to sleep there, no.
Yeah, that, that's concerning. Um, okay, well, you said you're not in the design process, but you're, you know, you had mentioned land sweeping and stuff like that. You might be able to put some tree lines.
I just, I spoke to him in, 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 you know, I saw on Friday, I was trying to, I said it would help him or make him comfortable. I don't wanna put up a couple of trees in the, in the, of the, of the units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And guys, just remember, yours was a development too, right? There's people who lived around you who might not have really wanted your development.
I understand that, I assume you know that, I think you're the same exact.
Okay, pull it, please, please, hold it, okay, please, name, please.
Sorry, Jennifer, so I'm, I know that you're still beginning of all of this about stability, and we wanted to maintain that. We're not coming to stop the development, we're not coming because we're mad about the development. I just wanted to set the record clear because I feel direct, like, lasers from you, Laura, and I feel like there's a comment for every single.
Actually, I'm very much against the development, the thing is.
I would just like our.
I just wanna make sure that we're all there.
Okay, timeout, can you please finish?
I was just like, everybody, I'm like, yes, it's all true, I am the peacemaker, I just want this to be.
None of us are engineers, architects.
Well, please, please, can we just, can we please, be from the podium only?
Like, none of us are architects or engineers, but we're also very educated individuals, we kind of, for lack of better words, got blindsided by the letter that their subdivision is going in, so that's why we wanted to come and express our concerns and ask our questions so that we actually can understand the process of the public hearing, understand what's going on behind us. Me, Mr. Boland, et cetera, we're not here to like make waves or make anybody angry, and I do feel that the stability on our end has been a higher level than the stability on the rest of the board. Sorry, but.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, okay. We do appreciate very much you taking the time and the time. But the, the theory is to listen for, and get input from those of others.
And comments.
Every single day that we say, there's a comment coming from over there, it's really disheartening and it makes us feel very uncomfortable. And I would just ask, again, meaning to the board that we get to be a member of that, we're trying to get everybody here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken, you had made a suggestion about putting in, um, a bus stop. Where, could you point, point out where you're talking about?
I don't know, I, I would dedicate the land, I'm not gonna put it in myself.
I understand, I would. It just, to me, idiotic if the buses don't go off.
There's a little strip, there's a little strip right here that I just mowed, just as a courtesy, you know what I mean?
The bus stop concern is something of, of the school board, it's nothing.
Right, and I agree with that too, I'm just trying to be.
If we have, if we have the space of the land, we'd be happy to dedicate it, but that is, that's an issue that should be brought up with the school board, the town board.
I understand that. If, if there was a piece that you thought would work, that might be the last tipping point for the school board, that, listen, we got someone that's trying to make us better, it's a hazard, you know it's a hazard.
I would, I would be glad, it'd be my pleasure to dedicate it.
I mean, I also.
I'm not using it anyway. I feel terrible, I don't, I don't, I want the kids, but I say, I don't have three kids, but I got two nieces and I got two nephews, my godsons are like my, my sons.
I appreciate that, but that's. Okay, all right, all right, please, direct it up there, okay. I'm, no, this, this young lady here, Grace Lutter.
Um, this is Gadas, on paper, you'll recognize me as lot sixteen, because I haven't met you. Um, but I reside, my home is at Three Lockview.
Yeah, sure, who's name is it? Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
I certainly, obviously echo, you know, each of the consolates that my neighbors have brought forward. And my concern is, again, I am number sixteen, which is here, which, um, there will be, and on the larger, I don't have my glasses on, so there's pretty much two buildings on here. So there will be two of the buildings that I'll be in plain sight of.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I know you talked about, you had mentioned, you know, trees, whatever, whatever, and, and I hear your excitement about that, but then I heard you say a couple of trees, you know, so I, I guess I would like to know, you know.
Please, okay, Lisa, please direct the fear and we'll, and Mr. Boland will respond here, please.
So, you know, privacy is, is obviously a concern because there's no trees behind sixteen, lot number sixteen, there's, there's nothing. So that obviously would be a concern, um, lighting, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going on, and I don't mean, you know, house lighting or, you know, in the front of these. And the design, um, I've already seen what, because one of my neighbors sent me a picture of what the design was gonna be. So I know we're not in the construction or design phase yet, from what I heard. Um, and, you know, as far as noise, there's gonna be four buildings, you know, two in each, so there's, you know, eight more, whether it be families, individuals, whatever. So noise, who's gonna maintain the area? I know that I had heard, you know, obviously, naturally, the winter is, is what a concern is, you know, one snowplow, whatever, and, and I think maybe Laura, you mentioned, or somebody mentioned, you know, we could put something in about a twenty-four hour. I would love that.
Yeah, we would just make sure that they're plowed and it's safe.
I think we're already.
Yeah, we're already ahead of that, that's not.
I've already got some conditions of approval written down on my end as well.
Okay, um, you know, but privacy, because I am probably certain that any one of these four buildings, eight units, don't wanna see me as much as, you know, I don't wanna see them. So that would be, you know, what can be done? Because this is already, I was just notified, I had to pick up my letter on Saturday at the post office, um, because I hadn't, you know, I, I didn't know about this until I picked up my letter on Saturday at the post office. And it's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, three days, that I've had to kind of digest what's going on. So, that's, that's my question. For my statement on this.
Well, we've already discussed putting trees up, we could definitely make that.
A condition.
A condition of approval, um, I've done that plenty of times with other subdivision, I've done where, you know, in that twenty-five foot block, we, once construction's finished, we go through, we do nice planting, so everything's nice and clean, we're not looking at a building, the building's not looking up at your house, there's a little bit more of a barrier than just some deeper cropping line on the, on the platform. So with the board, we'll make a condition of approval to put planting behind buildings.
Adequate, not, not young, because I know with any new construction, um, I am not new to, you know, to building a home, and any new construction, we're normally young, very immature plantings, so that, that I would ask.
A more mature product.
Yes, I don't wanna mature before this, you know, before the tree will mature, but I think in this case.
Probably like six feet, five feet, something like that.
Okay.
I, I have trouble pronouncing that.
Arbor by these, with work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more, sorry. Sorry. Still haven't clarified why we all got notified without being notified. So we were told that someone came to our door, delivered this slip, never, no one ever came to our door, I'm white, working on everything.
Hold on, hold on.
I, I just want to ask if I could address that. I am the clerk and I sent out the letter, they went out on the eighteenth of April, right?
Yep.
And they also are posted on our doors, and they're posted in, in the post office. Other than that, you don't get notified until it's time for the public hearing.
And I, so I had them out ten days, more than 10 days, before they were even required to go out. So I gave you guys adequate time. So if your post office...
Correct.
That didn't get it, or you didn't get it, go get it right away, it's not that you weren't notified in time.
And good, I do wanna clarify, it had nothing to do with you, because you...
Well, I sent them out.
You sent them out.
Right.
So does this complaint go to the post office, to the postman, who says apparently he came to our door to try to hand deliver it?
Yeah.
And we were home, but when we were home all day. So that's concerning.
It would, it would lie with the post office, because Stephanie did have this information.
They went out on the 18th, that you actually came back from vacation on the 17th and then it was out on the 18th.
And I definitely don't dispute that.
I made sure you guys had adequate time, and like I said, more than 10 days. That's all I wanted to give you.
Yep, that I don't dispute, it's just concerning that, it, it says that it was supposedly hand delivered.
And they're supposed to be, because I have all these signed receipts right here. And they're all stapled and I have things of when they went out, when they came in. Most people, some people didn't even return them, so...
Steph, Steph, you didn't hear that. Talk to the post office, honestly.
So that, that was, that was my question, so...
This is getting annoying, you know, so that's why...
Do you wanna be up there? No, if you want to be for me...
I got kids to go home to. That hit the table, it's really not being courteous for, right, Judge Hunter, and not... We're great coming here, we're trying to understand what's going on and it's very...
We didn't want them wanting to come here.
Talk to the post office, we can't help the post office. That's all. You said it like six times.
Well, you haven't said it six times, Steve.
Steve, Mr. Russell, say.
Wait, wait, time out, please, time out. Time out, okay. Brian, there is, there was a problem with the delivery of the power in the post office.
Definitely was.
Okay, we did our effort and I would suggest very strongly that you have a good conversation with the postmaster in...
And that was simply, that was simply my question, it wasn't, it wasn't playing fingers, it was just trying to find out why that happened.
The first time we come up, I mentioned that I had something out.
And I did not, and I, and I wasn't disputing that at all, I, I promise.
Steph, okay, we're not, please, would you just take a step back, take a quick breath, and Steph, you did your job.
I did do my job.
I definitely was not saying that, I, I promise that.
Okay, wait, time out, let's not try to dive before.
We're trying, thank you very much. Brian, Seven Lockview Drive, thank you for your time.
Okay, anyone else care to speak? Carol? Carol? Yes, uh...
Well, I, let's see, I think it's required cases on the private works, just in the wind, that if it's not clear by the discretion of the highway system, it's not about how much. If it's not clear, that the town goes in and clears it, takes care of it, whatever needs to be done, and charges it back to the property. So he has the opportunity to take care of it, but if it's not, residents have the opportunity to have...
I'll, I'll agree with that. Normally the, the town, um, the town plows with tilt going up the left, you know, to the right, and we do this front. We do all our...
There will be a condition, there will be a condition in the approval that we have it allowed within, I believe, was it 24 hours?
I'm not concerned about the time, but I give a condition of...
Because the normal small road around here, uh, three or four times a day.
Are you kidding me? Because a ridge barely gets plowed.
Wait, wait, time out, time out.
Carol, come on.
No, come on, please. Time out. Okay, all right, Carol, thank you.
It'll be covered now.
All right, that would be a condition that gets put in. Thank you very much. Okay, and who, who, anyone else, and call the chair to say anything.
Who does determine the road's plow, is it Tracy, Tracy?
I mean, somebody would complain in that, if, if actually the people who live there would be complaining to... Whether they should be complaining to Mr. Boland or...
And they will, my goodness. I mean, if they don't get it done.
They're gonna call both, or either.
We do a good job.
And the town, I don't suggest would be out there flagging, they would be enforcing against them.
Yeah, I feel that way.
Which is how the process would typically go, you don't wanna take over the road.
They're currently plowing Lockview a whole, all the sack, right? So they do, but you guys have trouble with where they place it. Peak and C.
DJ, you find a...
It, it's always plowed. My phone wouldn't stop ringing if it wasn't, so...
I've been towns like that. Even though I don't have to drive to the club every day.
Did you want the chair to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, I got...
Podium, please, podium.
Yeah, sure, like, I just wanna reiterate, like, I appreciate you guys have been answering our questions, um, you know, professionally, we appreciate it. And just, I am a little disappointed in, um, some of the comments and like some of the people I've said, just, you know, we're just trying to understand stuff. And we just don't feel like we're getting the respect on short notice from the board. And I find that disappointing as a member of the town. That's just my feeling. You guys have been very professional, I appreciate it. I don't know exactly what your responsibility is, you are the engineer, you're the consultant, yeah, so appreciate everything. Just wish we had a little more from you guys, so, thank you.
Anybody else in the public hearing?
Sorry, can I say that?
It's 10 days, right, that they have to get out. She's asking...
Yeah, you're, you did.
Typically, it's 10 days.
10 days.
You were...
I was way more...
You were, you absolutely mad about that.
Yeah.
When do we discuss, uh, the dis- conditions, right? Is it in the public hearing or after we close down the conference? So that's why I wanted to be sure.
Anyone else? All right, since there are no other comments in the public hearing section of this meeting, do I have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Steph, okay. All those in favor of opposing the public hearing? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? 7-6-7. Okay, conditions. All right, we start with plowing.
Well, they, we said they, but we put the rest of it up too, as far as making sure it's plowed within a certain amount of time.
20, 20, within 24 hours of the snow then.
Right, that was the platilla, that was up down the hill, this is down here, more of civilization.
That's what DJ requested for, that's what the town's required to do, we should not be anywhere strictly...
Right, right.
Any sayings like that, or we, I probably, they're the same thing.
You wanna make sure they, they're out there and plowing, so...
Okay, so make roads appear within 24 hours. Not just plowed, but clear.
Can I add to that condition, Ken, if you don't mind me speaking? There was concern about the children, I'd like to add to that, that, that area where it goes from the easement to, uh, or rather from Lockview to our property, that remains clear as well. So there's, you know, major snowbanks right there, so maybe that might ease a little bit of the pain.
Yeah.
I got a tractor coming, so we'll be glad about it.
But it was...
Okay, can you pinpoint that on the map?
That would be helpful, yeah.
If you, please, can you just pinpoint that on the map so we know exactly what you're plowing now?
So right here where we're going to start with our new road, where, where the road currently is narrower, I would say that once our infrastructure is in, we're plowing this, uh, you know, within this requirement, that we're not creating any more snowbank, we're plowing our snow down away from the intersection. Just to kind of give you some of that kind of concern.
Thank you, yeah.
The town maintains Lockview?
Yes.
And once this is an actual road, I'm sure that the town will be more careful enough so they leave in front of the road.
He's gonna, he's gonna, um, you can, you're gonna plow that so it's clear, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna say so that there's no sni- snowbanks and it's clear. It's kind of like a visual, like, that it's open.
He just actually blocked you around.
Was he saying shoulder, is that what it was up there?
Shoulder, correct.
Yeah, there was concerns that when they come down, down in Lockview, the town often puts piles of snow right there. We can, we can push that map a little bit lower, I don't think that being a...
Nothing the body can't handle.
And... Okay. Trees, on purpose? Along the line, behind the... What are you gonna put, put in there?
I would suggest, because there was a concern about maturity of the trees, I would suggest, uh, mature trees five feet or higher along those property lines. That would be my suggestion. Especially if you do something like arbor by these or a fast growing pine, they're gonna, they're gonna grow quicker than if you're to put, you know, sugar maple there or something.
So is to make a...
Natural barrier.
A natural barrier of some events between, on the backside of all properties, all four units.
Yep.
Now, I'm, I'm, that's fine, yeah, I... Yeah, 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 I want to... Thank you.
All right, Chris, does that satisfy you?
Yes, it does.
Chris, does that satisfy you?
It's fine.
Yeah, that doesn't affect me, so I'm... Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Wait, wait, does that satisfy your request?
Or mature trees?
Yes.
I, I suggested mature trees, um, at least five feet in height at the time of planning.
And then they're gonna be like spaced 10 feet apart, right? Like, they're gonna be like, it's gotta be something else. You know what I mean? Yeah. The arbor by these are fine, but I just wanted to make sure they weren't like 10 feet apart, so they're not like gaping holes.
Right, right, we tried to put a natural barrier on...
It's adroit, it's still more nice.
Yeah.
Certainly for the newer, the newer people who are there, probably it was nice for them too.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem creating a natural barrier along their property lines. And we'll require that the trees are at least five feet in height and there's not, you know, they're not at least 20 feet or whatever.
That's what I'm getting, I didn't want them to...
Adequate spacing will be...
Yeah, and whatever you recommend for type of tree, the arbor by these sounds great too.
I've done a bunch of commercial and residential.
They're easy to...
And that tends to be the number one tree in years, but, you know, we might be to a couple other small pines here just to kind of just root it up. Um, but typically, that's what I would use, a natural barrier.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, naturally, you stay within the envelope, construction envelope, that you have created for each house.
Yes, the construction envelope for each house will be, uh, staked out and it will not change, it cannot change.
But are you talking like along the full length of the property instead of just in front of the houses? Do you know what I mean, for your natural fencing, wouldn't it be better that it's along the path or along the, the line?
It will be along the line.
Okay, not in, just in the back of the houses?
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about planting these trees right up behind the house. I'm saying we're creating a natural barrier, we want these houses to have a backyard as well.
We just wanna make sure you're...
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure it's going to be actually in a barrier or a buffer.
Yep.
For both.
Yeah, my, my, I have, I don't have it drawn on here, but my idea would be to put it right along the back of the waterline.
That's what I was thinking, okay, that's good.
So there's still easy access to the waterline, and if there's ever any construction on the waterline, they can enter from our side of property, and all that construction will be seen by a few people online.
So we still have... Okay, next question. All right, uh, construction vehicles of all sorts will be down on the road in that, on the access road that leads from the point of the outside at the corner of Lockview, going down to the nowhere, if they pose any hindrance to any of the traffic going up and down Lockview, correct?
Correct.
No construction vehicles will be parked on any part of Lockview or any part of that intersection, they're all maintained on our property.
And down from the, in from the corner intersection, where, um, the road that you're expanding will be down from there, so as they give a little bit of a limit on a little bit of roadway, the traffic?
Yeah. I mean, at, at some point, we're gonna have to tie that road in, so when we tie that road in, there's gonna be a vehicle there paving, but that'll be just during that time.
That's just a one day or two day event.
Right.
But what you could do is just avoid...
Might be more than that, but...
Minimum, we'll, we'll have to...
No vehicles will work off of our property.
That's what I was gonna say, can you just avoid having anything on, whether it's two days or three days, make sure that the vehicles are not blocking the...
Construction sequence.
Has to be in a road.
Road.
Road and infrastructure first.
Wait, hold on, let, let's please be honest.
Road and infrastructure first.
Time, in time, rough timeframe on that? On, on what you're just talking.
We would hope to start road and infrastructure by the end of this year, or sometime within this year. And construction of the buildings would probably take place next year.
2024.
2024.
Preferably not in the next season.
Could you post to them, could you, could you post their, the information of what is gonna happen so that they... Do the people in Lockview, Lockview know what's going on?
I'm happy to know that we know where the meeting minutes are now, again, this is all kind of new to us. So now that we know that they're on there, we'll be looking at it.
But also, what we ask you is to try and keep you abreast of each step of this process.
Which we appreciate.
If, if, Mr. Russell, I'll, well, I'm not gonna, I mean, you're right. You don't have to do that.
Well...
With their hope.
Well, just like with any construction, there's a building permit that has to be posted, and that would, that would have to be posted at the end of the road when you start construction on the road.
Right.
But unfortunately, sometimes signs are easily driven by, but that's... Mr. Boland, your offer is deeply appreciated, to try and maintain a good before, if it's going on Lockview.
We want to be good neighbors, Mr. Russell.
It's very important, thank you, Mr. Boland. Time for the, uh, construction, beginning and end? Time, uh, date, time of day. Okay, that...
Yeah, like, now, 6:00 AM is starting before a certain, so it's just...
What time do your, uh, when do your children get on school bus?
I thought you were gonna say what's going to be a big cop.
It's not a five, it's... My question is, are you... Paving is more of an issue at night, because they work in the summer till like nine, because it's light out. They work late and we, our kids go to bed. I don't think more of our issues on mornings, we're all 3:00, 5:00.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Buses are 6:30 to us, it's more or less.
And eight.
Yeah, it's kind of like...
Okay, two, okay, potentially 7:00, 5:00?
That's, that's it. Yeah, I think that's typical. But it's not in the statute. That sounds fair. Maybe not with, with pavings, like, or whatnot, but if, if we're building in the summer, we wanna make use of the daylight hours.
I think it's in the code, what you're allowing.
It, it, it won't break the norms or anything.
Noise, noise are explosive.
It's different than like the construction.
Whatever's stated in the code, we'll follow it. Keep going, I'm, I'm so...
Yeah, he's gonna check this.
You can usually look, those stipulations are usually on like a national sort of part of the mining. You'll see that in comments or anything, they'll post those hours.
I thought there was something that we had set before.
I don't know if it's actually in the code, like...
Not in the code, but like if somebody had done some construction, I don't know if it was going on...
Basically, certain hours, or there are certain hours.
That's in their mining...
No, but this one we have to...
I'm talking about like, you know, on the 355, the bush, whatever. Didn't we have certain criteria that we put in for that?
I don't think there's anything here, I think you could agree to a reasonable amount and put it in its condition right now.
7-7?
7-7?
7-6.
What's the difference 7-6?
I think it's 7-6, I, I personally think 7-6. As a condition for construction, no construction on Sundays.
Works for me, I don't work on Sundays, it's God's day.
Thank you.
I'm serious, I'm not bullshitting you, I'm serious. I'm dead serious, I don't work on Sundays, I'm tired of that.
Thank you. What else, guys, what else would I say? Just a concern that we keep group relations...
Make sure that they clean up after themselves, let them work in the contractors.
But, but maintain the good neighbor approach that you've taken so far and that continues through your entire process, okay?
That's right.
People up there in Lockview are deserving of that, and we ask...
We are all good people, I don't doubt it at all, down to earth, we're not, we're not hassling anything about it, your...
Questions, please.
I'm just going through all my notes to make sure... I'm just going through all my notes to make sure there wasn't anything else that I had written down that would be a condition.
We had, or, what, he's done.
Uh, the only other thing I would say is maintain adequate property line.
It's huge.
Which kind of goes without saying, but.
Please do. And then, okay, we go parking signs? And the cul-de-sac?
Yes, yes, that, we, that was discussed previously.
Right, yeah, that would be approved.
Um, when they are working on the road, just be considerate for emergency services, because we do have other, apartments down there that we have to get access to, which should happen, so.
The, you mean the existing apartments?
Yeah, yeah, be signed up to make sure it's clear at night that they can get access to it.
All right, so I'll put in roadway clear at night and adequate access during construction time.
And I do have one more thing on, um, when I was up there, we just talked about the, the fifty foot buffer on the, on our western side, I guess, that runs through. I don't expect you guys, we don't expect you to add anything to there, but I think there's like maybe three trees there. You are bringing stuff through, it's just make sure that we keep those obviously intact as we can.
We have a few trees that we have, because when they cleared out a lot, they got rid of all of them, we have nothing, so.
How can you recover that, anything?
Well, no, once in a while.
Once in a while.
Yeah. Before we leave.
Okay, all right, please.
Yeah, I just leave the one on, on the side here, just not behind our house on, on this side. If you're bringing your, if you're bringing utilities, I guess, just.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that, that goes along with maintaining the adequate property line, as long as you know where that property line is. And, you know, as part of us bringing in trees here, we can always bring in.
I don't.
I was gonna say, could you bring a few trees in? Where he was just.
They, they shouldn't be crossing on.
Yeah, I, I don't expect you guys to do that, that's not anything affecting what you're doing, just if you can keep what's there, I think we would.
Yep.
I keep what's, if I break one, my.
Fair enough.
Can replace it, right?
Yes, sir.
Other question, other comments, uh, suggestions?
Are you gonna use LEDs or are you gonna use any kind of lighting systems that are not beneficial to the area?
Uh, that was discussed, uh, with one of their questions, there, there wouldn't be any intent to doing any sort of high powered lighting or anything like that. And since construction's going to be during the daylight hours, we wouldn't have light towers or anything like that, that kind of, that kind of procedure.
You know, you guys cut your landscape though properly?
Yes, I've, I've, uh, had this survey done since two thousand and three, and I've been working on this property.
I just wanna make sure that everybody knows where everything.
Pretty much, since I've. At this point, so yes, and yes, the systematic boundary survey.
While you have stake is, uh, one and four, is that right?
The two, the two buildings that are staked currently with the pink ribbon, though, that's building one and building four. And I will double check those before we start.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know that they, they move, people come down and kid comes by and knocks it over or whatever.
Subject systems. Totally accurate.
Yes, uh, I have the letter from the county, uh, Derek, um, the county health engineer has, uh, conditionally approved them, you won't give us our final approval until the subdivision is approved, that's just the county policy. Um, but we, I have submitted the letter from the county that says what we have is adequate, and meets, meets the specifications for subject system in the United States.
And plenty of, and there's adequate expansion.
Yes, there's fifty, there's fifty percent expansion for both systems, there's enough room there for me to fifty percent expansion for both systems. If needed. Because originally, remember, way back in October when I first came here, we wanted to do a lot more than this, and I had three subject systems down there, so now we only have two. So that all, that whole third system, that, all that space is available now, but needed to expand.
Thank you.
Jay, can you just send me a copy of that?
The letter?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I have a spare copy, I can give it to you at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I don't have it in your file, so just let me carry that.
Okay, other comments, other questions?
Just on the sewer system, I can't remember, isn't it normally you have to do what for household plus some extra, is that not true? Right? So what is the extra amount? Is it fifty percent?
Typically, with a design on a subject system, you design for your flow rate, which is. How do they have bedrooms and bathrooms? So we did that, these systems are sized for that, as well as part of that, you have to show that you have adequate space to increase the system by half of what the system is already, so that's fifty percent.
Thank you.
How far are your stakes from the property line versus my estate? Because I have a state down there, and your stakes are, you know, they're.
Um, our.
That distance.
Our, uh, are you closer to building four?
Four.
Uh, building four is twenty-six and change off the property line, twenty-six feet.
I think that's where I get, it's definitely over twenty feet.
Trees covered. Accessing the road, lots of vehicles. Anything else that we need to. And always, please keep notification on each, on any, any new construction or activity. People, especially on your side.
Of course, nothing, nothing from this, if this gets approved, nothing can change from this, we have to come back to you.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about, but changing timeline, yeah, changing timeline, you know, when you have the construction, just, and please notify the people, I mean, posting a signage, but if some type of letter can go out to, to the people, then you get to have their address, and just like a regular notification, because this is something special and, um, they're concerned, and we'd just like people aware of what's going on. I think that's most important.
That's it.
Okay. Timetables on road construction, on, on utility construction, and build waterline, et cetera. But please standard motion for it. All right? Want to, listen, something?
Something is to make a motion approval with those conditions.
Yes, but seeing any conditions are truly.
Not that I'm, uh, I'm.
What?
What is it?
Jeff?
Barrier department.
Yes, okay.
I'll get a copy of that.
Okay. All right, we have proposed a series of conditions that will be added to and adhered to by Mr. Ballon in construction of this, of these facilities, duplexes. Now, on the roadway, do I have a motion to approve with conditions that we have stipulated be applied or be applicable to Mr. Ballon's subdivision?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Thank you. Not what? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Usually there's discussion.
Okay, please, I thought we were having a discussion, but please discuss it.
Every motion needs discussion.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Everybody in this room knows I'm not a fan of high density projects, specifically because of this. Um, I like my privacy, everybody else does as well. But Ken has shown the ability and the willingness to bend where most others would not, even when it doesn't have to, so. That's my vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for being, you know, open to dirt, fierce, because you move into a place and you expect it to stay that way.
Anybody else here speak? All those in favor? On the motion to, so. All those in favor of the motion to put forth with conditions that Mr. Ballon will, has agreed to accept and live by for this project?
All right.
I agree with that.
And you're opposed, and you're staying?
Just not a fan, I don't like dense prop, property. I mean, it's better than where we started, which was how many apartments, but not a fan of that.
Oh, thank you, okay. All right, Mr. Ballon, thank you very much for your time, which, please, we thank you very much for your time and for your patience, Tony. We go by your word, lost your second to him, I'm gonna agree with it, if you will, hold everything that's been said, can you run over to me? And continue on with the good neighbor policy and straightforward attitude in operation of this project, please.
I wouldn't have any other line.
Please continue on this, okay, thanks, unfortunately, experience has taught us otherwise, that sometimes in the past, people were less than honest with us. We're hoping to avoid that situation. Thank you. People, everyone from Lockview, we thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
For coming down tonight, expressing your opinion, concerns, and we hope, no, we hope, this, this will go on in a positive tone, if it doesn't, please, for it, okay? Please pay it to our attention, all right? And after you've had the discussion with Mr. Ballon, if you hope it's such a action, we're all, that the project is, is going forward and working together to get this going in proper fashion, and in a way that will be acceptable to everyone. Again, we thank you very much for your time and coming down and expressing your thoughts, deeply appreciate it. And as far as the situation with the, the children and the school buses, we ask that you do talk with the school district to try and see if they would do that, and help roll up the road to run the cul-de-sac, be able to come back down. If I, that is service, instead of that situation that stacks up anyway.
And they're not gonna give you anything, so you're gonna have to fight for it, and they should be able to come down your road.
I think they're gonna see.
Did I just?
When the, when the baby boom.
Yeah, I just.
Gets school age in our neighborhood, they're gonna have to, because.
It's just ridiculous that they cannot come down. I mean, they, when I, when we moved here, they, except for our road, because it was private, they went down every road. And now, they don't do that, and that's ridiculous, that, that should be, you don't get much for living in the town of Poston Hill, the least they could do for your taxes.
Take it easy.
I'm sorry, but for the amount of money that you're paying, I'm sure you're paying a good amount of money.
You should point it with a cul-de-sac, because you go down and you drive around.
Well, and we, we moved like one additional bus drop halfway through the neighborhood, and they weren't even really amenable to that. But again, when we moved in six years ago, there were no children, and now I think we have like seventeen, seventeen kids in back here. So like, those, the school district is gonna see soon when they are school age, that, it's not gonna work.
My wife and I stopped drinking the water, we don't have kids, we got nervous for all our neighbors.
They're like, oh, okay.
Stop drinking the water.
They're not gonna, they're, knowing the school board, they're not gonna wanna do anything for you guys, you're going to have to.
And we have to teach a lot of, another time, but we have a lot of teachers, that'll.
Morning.
I disagree with that, uh, we live on a high metal road, dead end, they do a three point turn and come up and, and go back down. They did tell us, when there were six children living on the street, that they were gonna stop at the top of High Metal on Lynn Road. And we fought it, but I, I should say we fought it, we asked them if they can come all the way up to the top, which they do, they pull up my driveway, they back into the turnaround where, where the bus and the pile pulls in, and then they pull back out. So unless things have changed in the last, you know, ten years, they, you know, they were very, uh.
You're definitely hurting your drivers right now.
But there's no, I agree, because they, the street. Bus still comes, two buses come up, because now they changed the direction, but, and all of a sudden, I, I, I believe they will work with it, if, if we approach.
Thank you very much. Okay, we thank you more than all.
Yeah, no, we're happy to be parts of town, so. Oh, no, of course, no, sorry, see, that, take a breath. Thank you.
You know, I'm bad, I'm sorry. Just no.
That, I always. What is that? What is that? I was gonna say it's a Christmas, don't get found inside.
Okay, all right. Okay. Uh, next week, next item?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, next item up.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
Going on.
Six, four.
Houston announcer. It wasn't, it wasn't.
Six to one.
All right, so, a couple points of information, uh, we, I did get a res, I did get a response, I reached out to some different consultants for the comprehensive plan. The only person I've been able to get information back from is Cole Allen at the Reverge Group. And, um, she, she came back to offer a meeting with the town boards, planning board. More going towards the town board, but the meeting next week with the town board is, is gonna be a massive meeting and a real room. So we countered with an offer for our June, if, I asked her if she could possibly come to the June meeting with Mr. Hammond. Aaron will be here, June will be here, but also notify Mr. Posk and Mr. Wolliver that they would be able to come visit. That was Mr. Hammond's suggestion about, in June, so I put an email back out and I'm waiting for response from Mr. Allen. I have not heard from a couple other companies that I had requested, and somebody called back at, there's nothing, nothing there yet. So that's what we have so far, and, uh, we'll keep you posted as we learn more, all right? And also, in reference to what we were talking on, regards to the usage, the density, uh, on the property, this would be applicable to minor, I'm asking here, applicable to minor major subdivisions, PDD is what we're looking to push through and revise the current code from, into increase like the sixty or seventy-five percent of buildable, not the buildable land on these subdivisions.
So I. Yeah, I, I discussed this with, um, Tracy Church, actually after we, we submitted that, that request to the town, you know, to the town board. And, uh, I think the best route is just to limit the number of principal buildings, uh, then you don't have to get into the debate as to what's buildable and what's not buildable. Uh, with, with the exception of two, so it doesn't really matter how big your lot is, how many wetlands you have, if you can only have two per lot, you're gonna be ended up limited because you have a limited lot size, right? And you, you have a density of two, you can't do what just happened because it wouldn't, um, you can only have two, it could be eight acres, it could be sixteen, it could be a hundred and fifty acres, doesn't matter, you're limited to two, and the lot size is limited already. So Tracy was concerned. So, Tracy was concerned that there was gonna be a lot of debate going forward, and I think it was a very good point as to what's buildable, what's not buildable, and who's gonna make that decision, who's gonna second guess who? Um, if, if we did that in this case, um, yes, it's obvious the state well and is under the buffer, you can have a line, but that's not always gonna be the case. There's steep slopes that are buildable or not buildable, there's a lot of questions about that. Simple solution, if the town board desires, is to do, as we said, you know, two principal structures per lot. That's gonna take care of that concern, if that's what, or the density, that's what you, you're limited for the density that's included.
So, how's that affect a PDD, cause I, I still have.
I don't think it does.
It doesn't, so someone would come.
It does, so PDD is a whole separate animal.
So that, so like if someone came in and wanted to do like what Crono wanted to do, they could still apply for that.
Because the town's adopting law in the PDD, and that's their right to change those rules.
And they still get, it's the full review of the town board, full review of the planning board, so it's not like.
So, in the PDD, you could still change it, uh, but actually, you do have a cap, you can't change, it's, it's one and a half times, I think.
I think it's two, it's two hundred percent.
Two hundred, it's two hundred percent.
Two hundred percent.
Of, of buildable land, that, that does lay it out, that they have to, slopes over. So, that's not unlimited, although the town board could go up to that density, that you do have a cap built in the PDD. So, anyway, that, all of this is up to the town board, I just wanted to relay the discussion I had with Tracy, and I agree with him. In this case, it would be easier to just limit it to the question of how many principal, um, buildings you could have, which would be two in this case. One, two, in this class, or two if you have four.
David, any other comments?
No.
Thank you very much.
I had, uh, one comment, I, uh, went to the, uh, Planning Federation training session, um, up in Saratoga, Hilton. It was an excellent, uh, set of, uh, presentations that they made that I, that I attended. The one thing that I, I will toss, say, and it just may be something we have to worry about in the future. The, uh, issue about the affordable housing that didn't get into the budget this year was a big deal. It was, uh, something where the state could basically just override all the warning in any particular town to get the regulations that they wanted imposed. So, keep, uh, that in mind, they, they basically were, were going to say that all towns upstate essentially would have to provide one percent affordable housing in all building. So, if they improved any new building, one percent of that had to be affordable housing. And in addition to that, uh, accessory dwellings could be, uh, used as part of that, and there would be no on, that what, the way they stated it is that you could not impose any unreasonable regulations. And what they included in unreasonable was setbacks and, uh, any kind of, uh, regulations besides maybe wetlands that would, uh, impose a problem in building, uh, an accessory structure. And the accessory structure could actually be larger than the structure that was already primary to the building, to the lot. So, there was a lot of things that were in that, and that may come back again, so it's something that, uh, we wanna be aware of for the future. Thank you, Dan.
It's a very, it's a very scary thing, not that this is any part of my meeting, but I don't make sense of reading on that, because it affects a lot of what I do. And it's taking a lot of power away from local boards.
Right.
And giving it to the state, and it's not good, I'm very against it.
That's right.
I wouldn't much, I would come in here for six meetings and talk to you, and come up with a list of conditions of approval, and get something done, and have the state come in and just say.
Yeah, this is what's gonna happen.
This is our way, this is how we're gonna do it. It's much better to work with you guys than it is to have somebody from the state come out of nowhere and just tell me what I can't do.
It's time to divide in New York and let, and, you know, let the liberals keep on acting, if you ask me.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, Chris, God, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, let's see. Bill, you have May meetings, if you can, Laura, June if you can.
I'm Jim.
Steven, July if you can. Uh, let's see, two hearts, they had their, had the archaeological inspection, and they're waiting to hear back on results from that. Uh, a gentleman was digging around in a property, and that was a week, week and a half ago, and they were waiting for some type of report. As of Sunday, Saturday, they had not heard any comeback, I don't think, this week or not, on the results of archaeological digging.
Do they just normally just do it in archaeological?
It's required, or, or. Apparently there was something found across the street, that's why I think. Anything else, you have, anybody, any other reports?
Okay, do we know, is, is the town board taking up the issue that we just talked about?
It's being discussed.
Next meeting?
Probably not.
I thought it was gonna be last meeting, I couldn't.
Well, it was on there, and it was discussed, but it was discussed in relationship to what you just talked about. You're gonna change like density issue and everything, and we had a look at the PDD, PDD's already had like the density that you just mentioned and everything, so. They're trying to get worded, I think maybe you and Urs talked it handily, or Will talked it handily.
Uh, we haven't shared word yet, but.
Yeah, he's gonna be involved.
It is moving, Steve. Other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Laura, seconded?
Tom seconded.
Who seconded?
Tom seconded, I started it.
All those in favor of German, uh, anyone opposed, and we're standing, thank you very much, one at all.
Start laying out, you got swamp view.
I, I got, I got the routine view, I got swamp view. And then there's actually, the high-rise, the ones that are gonna be built over. What are you talking about? Nobody, nobody signs, right? I'm not gonna drink back from the match.
Yeah.